Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you all doing?
Good, how about you?
All right, good, thank you. Thankfully, I'm here tonight to update you on our 2017-2018 C-Fund selections. As we agreed in, on October 2nd, whenever you selected your roads and approved them, that I would come back and give you an update. As of today, we have sent the roads to the Highway Department for programming, and we've already bid out the county-maintained roads, received bids back. Thankfully, they came in under budget, so that was a blessing, so I think we're having positive results from being proactive and putting this, you know, earlier in the schedule. We got very positive results on the bids, so want to happily report that, that everything is moving along in a positive direction, just as we really wanted it to do. That was basically it, just wanted to give you an update and have a positive lean to it.
Are you positive?
Good.
Any questions?
Positive? One thing I've heard, I think he's positive.
Absolutely, very happy, especially about the bids.
That's really good news for me, Dean.
Absolutely, yes ma'am.
Excellent, thank you Dean.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call the County Council meeting to order. I'm gonna begin the meeting by letting you know that our Chairman, Britt Blackwell, is out tonight. He will be out for at least the next six to eight weeks. Britt is undergoing triple bypass surgery on Thursday of this week. We ask that you keep him in your thoughts and prayers, pray for Britt and pray for his family over the next week. Chad Williams will now give the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Please, join me in prayer. God be with us, make sure we remain thankful for all the beautiful, wonderful gifts you've given to this county. It's this hectic time of year, it's real easy to lose track and take them for granted, but we remain thankful for that. Please watch over all of our citizens, please be with us as we try to determine to use your gifts to the best for this county, and help all of us remember the reason for the cease. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would Walt Heinsohn, Jennifer Bowman, and Greg Fitzgerald come forward for the oath of office?
I agree.
Here, both of you.
I'm here, I'm the minister of the oath, and then after we've had the council place to say we're going to shake our hands and approach. On behalf of the county, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
We can't operate without our work, and we miss you members, so appreciate your service. If you'd kindly raise your right hand, would you hand for me? I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
That I'm duly qualified-
That I am duly qualified-
According to the Constitution of this state-
According to the Constitution of this state-
To exercise the duties of the office-
To exercise the duties of the office-
Which I have been appointed-
Which I have been appointed-
And that I will-
And that I will-
To the best of my ability- Discharge the duties thereof-
Discharge the duties thereof-
And preserve, protect, and defend-
And preserve, protect, and defend-
The Constitution of this state-
The Constitution of this state-
And of the United States.
So help me God. Thank you. Goodness.
Thank you, Michael.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you for serving.
Under appearances, we have Bill Saint to address the council regarding the Fort Mill
School District impact fees. Mr. Saint? All right. No one has, no one signed up for the public forum, correct? All right. Before we begin the consent agenda, does any council member, is there any council member who would like to make any changes to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, I'd like to remove number 11 from the consent agenda and put it in new business. That interesting enough, that is, involves supporting impact fees, but just have two points I'd like to make about that.
We will move the item number 11 under the consent agenda to new business number five. Do I have a motion on consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, thank you. Under public hearings, public hearing rezoned, number one, rezoning action, consider first reading and hold a public hearing, case number seventeen dash thirty-two, tax map six-five-four-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-zero, and six-five-four-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-four-three. To rezone from AGC to RC two, six point four acres at twenty-two seventy-five New Gray Rock Road in the Fort Mill community. Do we have anyone here in favor? Please come forward. Please give your name and address.
Mike Zimke, 105 Marshall Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina.
Now, if you want to say anything in favor of it, go ahead.
Nope, I don't.
Oh, all right. That is fine, that is fine. Would anyone else like to give an encouraging word on it? Please come forward.
Hello, this is Dan Dodd, landscape architect, Dodd Studio. We just feel that, on this project, that it fits with the vision of the future land use plan, and would like to see it, accept it.
Thank you. Could you please give your address, real fast?
Oh, yes, we're at three-fourteen Tom Hall Street, Fort Mill.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Yes, sir.
Well, I'm the owner of the property, I just wanted to say that it's gonna be five real nice homes, and I feel real good about it, and I, you know, I'm glad somebody's gonna build it that way, and it's gonna be on big lots, so I'm encouraged.
And you're Mr. Griffin, James Griffin?
I am.
And your address, please?
Eighteen-seventy-five New Gray Rock Road, Fort Mill.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else in favor? Anyone opposed?
Move to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any other motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, thank you. Consider second reading and public hearing on case number seventeen dash thirty-seven, tax map seven-two-six-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-six-six, to rezone from UD to RD one, one point six acres at three-thirty-two Mark Trail Lane in the Fort Mill community. Is anyone here in favor? Anyone opposed?
Move to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? New motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem tax agreement to provide for a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes incentive to Anderson Hydra Platforms, Inc., including its affiliated and related entities, formally identified as Project Anderson, the inclusion of certain property in York County, South Carolina, and a multi-county industrial or business park, the provision of certain infrastructure credits, and other matters related thereto. Would anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone opposed?
Move to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, please, Tom, welcome. Control of the Anderson Land System.
I'm sure.
Does he want us to change our mind?
With such prompting, I just want to thank the council for the consideration. We've tripled our workforce the last couple of years, and with y'all's help, we look forward to doing it again in the next few years. Thank you, sir. Anna motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor say?
I just want to say, I'm sure Anderson would be more than happy to have anyone come out. If you've never been out there, those are pretty amazing pieces of equipment that they make for people to be able to go around and underneath bridges and do inspections and stuff, so it's made right here in York County, so, thank you.
And I'd also, Mr. Lumpkin, I apologize, I must have put you on, on edge, because I've never seen you so nervous in front of a body. You did well.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? New business, counsel to discuss and consider adopting a component of the county human resources policy aimed toward investing in existing employees, so that county job descriptions for employment positions will specify a combination of work experience and training, which can be utilized in lieu of stated degree requirements, with direction to county management and the county human resources department to survey county employment positions and recommend those positions which can benefit from this policy. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm the one who requested that we take action on this, but I believe that the entire council was supportive of this, and actually believed this to be the policy that the council had already adopted. That being that we encourage and allow our existing employees, especially the right to better themselves and to be considered for positions for which they have the equivalent experience and know-how. There's a lot of folks that have institutional knowledge that you can't recreate just by having a BA beside your name, and so I think what, what the chairman, who I cleared this with before we put it on the council, and I believe what we talked about before, I think council already thought that that was the policy that was being implemented, and to the extent that it's not, and asked Michael Kendry to craft something that could be incorporated into our HR policies and procedures to ensure that at least the will of council is that we have the opportunity for folks who have the equivalent experience and ability to be considered for positions for which they're qualified for. So I'd request that council agree to approve a policy amendment to effectuate that.
Mr. Williams?
I agree, and I guess I would, I'm glad it's aimed toward existing employees, but I'd also, I don't know if there'd be an objection, I'd like to see in, in job requirements, I think that our existing employees have a leg up, but in job, job requirements, there's some jobs that experience is actually better than education, and I would, I mean, I would hope, not just for our internal candidates, but we could extend that to the external candidates when it makes sense as well. I know that for the past couple of years, we've had, had folks with twenty-five years of experience not be, not, not be considered for jobs just because they didn't have a associate's or a bachelor's degree, but probably would have, would have done well, not that we didn't, didn't do good with who we finally placed, but, but if we can open it up to all qualified people, we'll have the best people working at York County.
So, Mr. Chairman, so does this new change only apply to, the equivalency only applies to existing employees, or we're gonna extend it, like Chad just said, to external candidates as well?
That's what I just, question is, man.
I think you could expand it to both, because the, the argument remains the same, the experience.
Hold equivalent.
We can benefit from the experience at either level. There is a policy that you consider internal applicants first in the ordinance, and so that would be a consideration, but I think if there's somebody out there, you can certainly benefit from it.
And, and this has kept internal applicants as well, so I think it would, it would help. I appreciate you bringing it, Ms. Cox.
And I'll just say, I guess, I was, I guess, a little confused, because my understanding was when we hired the outside consultant, and we went through all the pay grades, and we did all this stuff, that it was a degree or equivalent that was on that, so I was a little confused as to why it was being brought up again, because I thought that was what originally was, was agreed upon and said, so.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes, sir. Basically, what we've got is, we've got some positions that are strictly for bachelor's degree or above, and then we've got some that's bachelor's degree in combination. When we originally did it, we did, we had our consultants, we had our department heads, and we had HR, take a look at these positions and identify which ones we thought, so what I will do is, I will, every year, every year around December, we actually go through our position descriptions, and we upgrade them, and, you know, look for changes in jobs. I will send you guys, if it's okay, a copy of all the positions that belong to York County, not the elected officials, and which ones are strictly bachelor's degree, and which ones are a combination of both, and then we'll look at them also, and that way you will know what we have, and why we have it, and then we'll, we'll find if any of them need to be changed.
Is there anything, is there anything that we need to do to ensure, because I think I, I like Robert, thought this was the policy, and obviously council, it's not our job to come in and micromanage, but it is, it is our job to set policy and to ensure that what we think is, is happening is actually happening, and so we recently had an issue that we had to deal with in, in a personnel matter, that, that showed us that perhaps that wasn't being implemented correctly, so I guess what I'm looking from you, Michael, is there anything that we need to do to, to make sure that what council understands as the policy is, or?
I would, I would recommend voting on adopting the policy, and then what I would suggest to human resources, since the, most policies are codified, is that we come forward with an amendment to reflect that aspect of the policy.
So, you have a motion tonight to approve that?
To approve the policy, and then we'll codify it.
Well, I, and before, I just want to make sure, we, we've had, it sounds like everyone's unanimous, that it will be larger than just what we are discussing, it is what you have said as well, Chad, so maybe that might be better to actually state that out loud again, and then make that a motion.
And I'll be happy to hold comments till after that's done, if we need to, but I, or I'll make-
Let's, let's get a motion in a second, and we can move forward.
Make, make a motion to approve the policy consistent with what has been presented on new business, and also make it more comprehensive to include, be inclusive of outside applicants.
Second.
All right, discussion. Winkler?
I'll just say, you know, again, our job's not to micromanage, so if there are positions, and there are certain things that do require degrees and that kind of thing, that, that's the consultant and the staff and the experts feel like those still need to be degree-only type positions, I'm not here to micromanage that, in my opinion, and do that, so I don't know that this policy specifically would go for, across the board, for every position that can be an equivalent, because I think there are some things that you have, you need a degree for, so.
But that, that's probably true, but probably less than more, and I think we're doing, I think we got flipped. I think there's probably less that actually require a degree than, than we have, but I don't, yeah, I'm not in the business to microman-
Yeah, I don't want to get into looking at every single one out there.
I just, I just have a generic question, because I'm curious, and this sounds like the right time to ask it. So, when people go on the new website, they can, they can put on there to be notified, so is it possible for them to be notified of job openings and board and commission openings, so that they would be, so that, in other words, they would get notification, because there were a couple of jobs that were, that came up, and some people missed on it, because they didn't know that they had just hired, they had just run the ad for that, and by the time they knew about it, it had closed, so I just, I just wonder if, if we can make that part of that, part of the webpage, so that people, people, there's some people that are just looking for a county job, and then there's some people that are looking to be on a board, so I just would like for them to be able to be notified, to get a notice when those things come avail, become available.
There's not for boards and commissions that Karen just briefed me on, you know, I'll, I'll-
There may be a way, Ms. Chan, there may be a way with new civic HR program that the room-
Yeah, I don't-
-is Neo-Gov, to sign up for job alerts-
Right, that's what I'm-
And when you do that, you might be able to implement the vacancies of boards and commissions as well, so if you're interested, your email will immediately populate with whatever vacancy may be-
Right, that would be good, because people, you know, it's, if their looks like mine, it's always right after something's just disclosed.
But, but again, we're gonna look at that, we don't know for sure.
Okay.
If you can, that would help us fill some of our-
It would definitely help with that.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel to consider a request to fund two additional property appraisers for the tax assessor's office.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion?
I'm the, apparently I'm the one that got called out on having some questions about it, but I don't think I'm the only one, or at least in some of my other discussions, I don't think I was the only one. When we had the meeting on this, I think some of the questions that I had that, that did not seem completely clear were, obviously, these job positions, I would have expected them to come up when we went through the budgeting process, like the other departments, but the confusion that I had was, obviously, there were a few things that were concerning. One, the KAMA software, we, we learned, hadn't, has not actually been purchased and approved, which was approved years ago in the budget, and obviously, that's not been implemented. As I understood the discussion we had, I had some confusion about, do we actually need to hire two additional folks? That didn't seem to be one of the things in our strategic goals, that we were looking to hire these folks at the outset of this year, so I'm wondering if we need to have some more discussion from a council perspective, because you add on two new folks, and then you don't ever get rid of them. The bigger question was, should these folks really be temp folks, is the work that we really need to have happen, catching up with the software, and to hire those folks to get the, the job done, because I think in the meeting that I had, there was some confusion amongst management as to whether or not that, we needed these folks full-time, the counties that were looking at making them equivalent to have significantly higher population than we do, and so the comments that I heard in the meeting that I had seemed to be conflicting on that, as to whether or not we need that, because as I hear it now, we're saying we need to hire these two folks, and we need to hire additional temp folks at a later time, and, and what confused me about that conversation was that there was this idea that there are some folks that are retiring now, that are gonna leave, and that these two would fill in, in those slots, and that we would be back down to what we needed, I believe that.
That's what I was under the impression, yes, ma'am. I did-
So.
And any, I'm gonna add, well, go ahead, Robert.
I was gonna say, for me, I looked at some of the numbers as far as how many permits are issued in the county, both for additions or new homes being built, and what our staff is, and that type thing, and I calculated, I forget, I was gonna try to look how many thousands of permits it is in the county each year, and each of those has to be appraised or reappraised if it's an addition or something, plus every home that's sold, every time there's a transaction, that type thing, and then once every five years, the across-the-board reassessment. So for me, the KAMA's a different situation, I just looked at number of appraisals, or that, that have to be done, based on permits, new buildings, all of that type thing, and the number of employees that we have doing that, and the way I calculated it was every employee in that department that does appraisals, works forty hours a week, takes, works fifty weeks a year, and takes two weeks of vacation. If that's true, then they have to complete an appraisal every fifteen minutes to be able to do it. And so that tells me, not talking about KAMA or anything else, we need staff, because I don't think you can do a real good appraisal on a property in fifteen minutes. I know when I bought my property, it took that lady a whole lot longer than fifteen minutes to do the appraisal on my property, when I bought my house a few years ago, so. I support the two additional people, just based on that. I think KAMA's a whole different discussion, not for tonight. I think they need them, just based on those numbers, if you look at the number they have to do every year.
Bill, I'm gonna make a statement, and I'm gonna let you and Kevin kind of answer as a whole to us. I attended the same meeting, Ms. Cox attended, and I, and I kind of walked away with it a bit confused, I believe, myself. One, I was upset about the whole idea of the KAMA, and while KAMA may be a separate issue, KAMA is the software that is needed to, to handle these appraisals. This council voted as part of its budget two years ago to approve KAMA, and I voted against that budget, and KAMA has still not been purchased, bought, or implemented by this county, and we raised taxes to do that. And anytime you raise taxes, you, you have a duty, I believe, to the taxpayer to actually spend their money and use it wisely, and we have sat on that money for two years, and that, and that is an issue that needs to be addressed, as part of this. I think, and I, and I walked away with the same impression that Ms. Cox did, was that could this work be done by temporary workers to catch us up, and then not necessarily need a full-time position going forward? And I think that's where I was left with a good bit of confusion following that meeting, is the need for temporary versus full-time workers. I, I was under the impression that we could be filled by temporary, who would catch us up, and then at some point, if other people retired, those temporary could be moved to full-time. I also understand that there are temporary workers needed, just simply to input data into KAMA. I think when you start talking about what it costs for, for us to maintain employees on a reoccurring basis, by the time you factor in state retirement, health benefits, and all of the things that go along with being a county employee, it, it, there is some sense to looking at temporary workers when you know you're not, you may not need that position full-time. I'd, I'd love, if you can answer those questions, and kind of let it, give us some feedback, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, in reference, in reference to the two positions, I am not sure why the last director didn't request them during the budget hearing, but that's that. We had a new count, we had a new director come in, and he looked at things, and he looked at the, the number, the amount of work that we have, the number of bodies that we have, he compared it to what other folks are doing, he compared it to what we're actually able to get accomplished, and it showed those two positions were needed. That's a completely separate issue from the KAMA. In reference to the KAMA, sir, you asked for a, a schedule of events to show what we've done, and the information that we provided to the council. I do have that here, and I was planning, as we spoke before, to present it to you at the end of this meeting, because that'll give you all the information that you need, and if you have any questions on that, of course, we'll be ready, willing, and able to provide the answers, so.
Let me take the blame for the confusion in the meeting we had with y'all two about that, I think we had a lot of people talking. I don't think I had Bill completely up to speed with all the information about the need for those positions. Every year, we do look at our staff levels, and do we need to continue where they're at, do they need to go up, do they need to go down? Currently, I see no reason why those positions would go down, however, two, three years from now, if we don't need them, because of the new KAMA system, through attrition, we would take them down, but that's not why we're asking for full-time people right now. We need full-time people, two more additional people in there, to stay afloat in that department. Right now, they're starting to drown. I think I sent an email out to Bill, I hope he sent to y'all, we're over two thousand permits behind right now. They are, they're not keeping up. It's a staffing issue. I wish the previous assessor had brought this up. There was a, a lot I learned in the months before we got a new assessor, we're very fortunate with who we have in place, he understands what that department needs to be successful. I think we've tried to highlight some of the, you know, we've stubbed our toe a few times in that department, we don't want to do that going forward. To ensure we have a fair tax base, where everybody's paying what they need to be paying, it's critical that department is properly staffed, so.
Any other discussion of questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Number three, counsel discuss and authorize county management to pursue discussions to amend the development agreement between York County and Crescent Allison Creek LLC as master developer, and the parcel developers' party here too. I'm gonna turn this over to Councilwoman Love.
To make a motion, or to, for discussion?
For discussion.
For discussion, okay. So I ask that this be put on, having met with Crescent and a couple of others, you know, we had a, we had just some information that, that kind of rose to the, to the surface back when they were looking at putting eight, eight-hundred-and-forty-two homes on that Dama property, and even though that developer had cut back on the number of homes that he was gonna put there, the required number, which is about thirty-seven-hundred, would still have to be met. So in speaking with Crescent, several, three different people at Crescent Properties, they were not aware that there was a minimum number of residences that would, that would need to go there, and they are willing to reduce that, that number. Crescent Properties has their own development company now, and they will more than likely be developing those properties, rather than selling them to another developer, so the good news is that they're, they're very, seem very positive and willing to work and do the right thing on that Highway two-seventy-four corridor, based on what I've, I've, my conversations with them, so I would just like for it to be opened back up, all the parties would have to come to the table, and we would open it up for a discussion, to do what's, we feel like is a better thing for District Two.
Would the developers have to agree to open this back up? Because I know we had some discussion in one of our meetings.
Yes, well, yes, and-
Are they willing to do that?
Yes, they are.
Go back to drawing board, okay.
Yeah.
From my perspective, I certainly have. Anybody who wants to reduce the amount of units, residential units, in places like Lake Wiley and Fort Mill TK, I don't see how you argue with it, so I have, I have no issue with that at all. Anyone else?
I agree, I'm not gonna argue with reducing it, so. If they're willing to come to the table and negotiate. As long as both sides see benefit in opening it up. I don't know, probably.
Ms. Kendry, do you need a vote, or is it sufficient?
Yes, please, move to authorize.
So, make a motion that we authorize for the, the-
So make a motion that we authorize for the development agreement between York County and Crescent Allison Creek LLC be opened up and renegotiated.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Number four, council to consider a resolution authorizing the assignment of the filo agreement by and among York County, South Carolina, Ishmore Inc., the company, and TKC Ashley LLC, the sponsor affiliate, whereby pursuant to such assignment, the sponsor affiliate assigns its interest in the filo agreement to TKCC CCV LLC and BRFDC LLC as tenants in common, and together such parties shall become the new sponsor affiliate under the filo agreement.
Could you repeat that?
Yes.
Just kidding.
Do we need a motion?
We do need a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Number five, council to consider adopting a resolution directing the York County Planning Commission to conduct the studies related to the imposition of a development impact fee applicable within the geographic area of the Fort Mill School District and associated with the public education facilities for grades K through 12, considered necessary for the proper education of the school district's children, and recommended a resulting impact fee ordinance related thereto.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I brought this out of consent, I just wanted to put a daylight on a couple of things. One, when we were first approached with this idea, it sounded like it was real simple. It was an impact fee that Fort Mill has been charged for years, they just wanted to change the amount. But what we found out is that they can't just do that, that it has to go through updated ordinance, which may or may not put us on the hook for it, but it has to go through this process. And rather than stopping there, we've agreed to work together, which I think is great. I think the, we've all done more with less, as much as we can do. Consolidation and cooperation is the only way to save more taxpayer dollars. And Fort Mill has agreed to, they understand that there's a cost for us coming up with this, and they've agreed to participate in the cost. And we're also going to, we've been talking about impact fee studies ourself, this is going to morph into a more general area, but I guess, that was the main two reasons I wanted to bring it up. That's my understanding, is this is going to morph into our countywide area, and that Fort Mill has agreed to participate monetarily and as well as part of the process.
Yes, and Michael, Andy, and myself met with them, and they definitely agreed to that.
But we are, and that's part of it, then we're also going to, our impact fee study will follow the same track, so we can, we won't be doing it twice again. Those two things are not clear in the consent agenda, so I just wanted to, and the materials we have in the consent agenda, so I just wanted to bring clarity to that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Any other discussion?
I just will add, the resolution, was that drafted by you and approved by you, Michael?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none? Council member new non-agenda comments. Anyone?
I guess there's no committee.
Oh, wow. Mr. Winkler, let's go.
I just want to make the announcement, I'll be sending out the email a little bit for Karen. I'm going to request and let the council know that I would like Economic Development Committee to meet in January and look at a couple of things. We've got some updates on our East York Spec Building site readiness update, some filo and Gatsby reporting changes that are coming down the pike for how those are reported to the public and that type thing. So I think sometime in January, I'm going to be getting Karen and trying to get that on the agenda for the Economic Development Committee, just keeping the council in the loop by new policy and procedures.
Thank you, sir. Roddy.
And can we please note that the second meeting in December next year will be asking council to participate in the ugly sweater council meeting? Although this is not ugly sweat.
I'm going to say, did you start earlier and not tell us?
See, Mr. Williams.
See, did you make the announcement about the first meeting in January?
I'm going to at the end of this.
Then no.
Yeah, I have no comment.
So I just had something that I wanted to say, and it's, you know, it's always hard to be able to talk to everybody at one time, but I have a concern, and just want to let you know what it's going to take to get me to support this earlier on. I don't want to surprise you with anything, but a few months back, I was asked to be the liaison, the council liaison for the Stormwater Utility District, and so I sat through a couple of the most boring meetings I've ever sat through discussing that, and I learned a little bit. And even when they came to us and publicly told us what it was all about, it's still very difficult for the public to understand. I'm not sure that I have a total grasp on it. But one of the things that, well, two of the things that we discussed in that meeting, at the end of the meeting, I asked if the Stormwater Utility District would benefit us in being able to limit clearcutting, and I was told absolutely yes. And the other thing that I wanted to bring up in talking with our county manager and the head of our planning and zoning department, Andy and Audra, and a few others in the district that's right there on the lake regarding runoff and such into the lake, was that the Stormwater Utility District will allow us to charge developers more when there is an incident. Right now, we are capped at $1,000 by the state, but if we have a Stormwater Utility District, we can charge more. In the presentation that was made to us about Stormwater Utility, there was no mention of these two items. It's very important to me that we benefit from the Stormwater Utility District, that we not just begin something and raise taxes for it and not gain something. Going into 2018, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, going into 2018, one of the things that I'm going to ask every time something comes up is what is the benefit to our taxpayers? What is the benefit to our residents? And in this case, I think the benefit of the Stormwater Utility District, what offsets that cost, will be being able to do something about clearcutting and runoff. One of the things that came out of that meeting and discussions about what we could do to help with the lake and the runoff and that kind of thing, was that one of the things that was, came to light, was that even though we are allowed to charge $1,000, we have it capped at $250. So I want to see York County making the effort ahead of time, not waiting for a Stormwater Utility District. In other words, I want to see the benefit of something that we're going to be charging everybody ahead of time. I want to know that we are doing all of the right things, and our current situation in Lake Wiley right now is not good. We have some coves that are filling in, and I'm not convinced that it's colored water. So until I see some effort being made to stop that, and until I hear in the presentation in selling us on the Stormwater Utility District that we will use this to stop clearcutting and to help our lake and to find developers when they allow something to happen, I'm not going to support the Stormwater Utility District until I see that. And one more thing I wasn't going to say, but I am going to say, because I think going into the holiday season, you know, one thing that is very important to me are the animals that are sitting out of animal control, and it would be great if all of these animals had happy homes for the holidays. So if you will, please share that, because there are a lot of animals there that will have a very cold Christmas Eve in the shelter. And I want to say that although we, you know, council hates to see the rescues getting together and coming to talk to council, but these people are very important to getting these animals out of animal control. And they actually have had this year hundreds of animals that have, that are not adoptable, but they have sent, they've sent out of animal control to rescues nationwide. And I think these people need a great big pat on the back for getting dogs that would otherwise be euthanized out of our animal shelter. So kudos to those rescues that drive us crazy sometimes because they're emotionally involved in saving the lives of animals, but they have done an excellent job in 2017, and they have rebuilt the rescue world as we know it for York County, and they're continuing to rebuild that. So I personally am very appreciative of the work that they have done to do that, to get to accomplish that mission.
Any other comments? I'm going to add one thing. We have a regular scheduled meeting on January the 2nd due to a lack of quorum on that day, mainly because of the Clemson football game the previous day. We will not have our regular scheduled meeting. However, if the administration believes we need a meeting, please let us know, and we will reconvene on either the 3rd or the 4th, so that we could have a regular scheduled meeting. Otherwise, we will meet on the 16th, which is a Tuesday the day after Martin Luther King Day. Do I have a?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd like to say about that is, you know, I didn't realize it was solely about the one person going to that.
I just blame that. I like to blame Clemson for lots of things.
I'll be more than happy to meet on Wednesday or Thursday if we need to, but.
Just give me your tics, and I'll go. I'm still having a meeting.
Yes, sir. I move we go into executive session to receive legal advice on a proposed contractual matter to discuss proposed change to the covenants and restrictions of County Parcel 6500-000-665 and Parcel 6500-00-666 and 018 on Grant Farm Road, as well as to receive legal advice in the form of a litigation update. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? We are actually going to go directly into executive session. We are out of executive session. Do I have any motions?
Yes, sir. I move that we authorize the proposed change to the covenants on the three properties we discussed on Grant Farm Road. The changes involve adding fiber cement board and culture stone as options for the front material as to the others already listed in the covenants.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? That passes. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I'd like, on behalf of the county council, to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.